I was thinking. Budget for the year.
Jen, I didn't need a title abstract, I just wanted to see a couple of teeth.
Good job, Jen. There was a lot of info there.
No wonder Jeremy didn't read through them.
That's why I was saying, did he read through them all, put them all together?
Still learning to read, guys.
Seriously. There was some serious work there, putting that all together.
Sorry.
We back on?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, we ready for the next one?
Yeah.
Alright, who's up? He's out of here, alright, Hutchins?
So, that's gonna be all for other people too.
Alright, how are we gonna do this with social distancing?
How many are we allowed, ten? Ten, are we gonna go with the max? You're bringing proud with you, John.
I um. When I brought that one that you've got. So I think you guys would also like to see where the actual. DEP wanted, which was the um, to push the original footprint back to the best practical location. And she said you guys would also like to see the proposed building.
Proposed building is done yet, but it's, I did the best I could to give you about what they want. And so these ones, these ones, what I did was I took that. I took that um, where that building, where that one shows the building and I made this sort of a corridor where I took the closest point and the furthest point. Those purple lines on there, those kind of purple lines on there, that's the closest point of that building and the furthest point of that building and then put the proposed one. Do you have a question, but it's, it gets complicated.
Well, I said, why don't you make full size first?
It's two of them.
I got some bigger ones of this guy, too, if you want. Did you ever read that one?
Yeah. That was just the twenty-five foot from the high water in the fifty.
That one doesn't have the purple lines on it, as you were saying?
No, what it is, it's.
Purple lines on the other one?
I pushed the, the, the twenty-five foot line, there's a big one on there.
So he wanted.
But the building is actually further. You saw, it's hard to read on that.
I don't know, there's a line there.
He just handed.
Okay, so the front of the building's twenty-seven and a half, the back, the back is fifty-five.
Did everybody hear that?
No.
That's twenty-seven and a half. That's the twenty-five foot buildings behind it.
So basically this, the, the, the best practical location you end up with a, with a line is twenty-seven and a half feet from the shoreline, the shoreline. And one is fifty-five feet from the shoreline. And the proposed building is in that corridor between those two. So in other words, the proposed building will be no closer and no further.
From this little piece here. That's sticking out within this purple line, you're telling me that's twenty-seven and a half feet?
Yeah. The blue line there is twenty-five feet.
And this other purple line is that fifty-five foot line?
Yeah.
What exactly is this?
That's the, that's the erosion control, that says it does actually.
Andy?
It says that, like it's a, at this side, it's side of the.
Exactly, huh?
So erosion control, that's.
Thank you, we got no idea, right?
They wanted erosion control, they wanted, they wanted to drain it.
The four inch new.
Then they got drainage channels on it, which are the existing drainage.
It looks the same. John, this red. Of mine.
So the red line is what the DEP wanted, that's the original building footprint.
That's what I was asking, if it was the same.
Bring it back, practical location.
So this. So is your front part?
I just want to verify, no, it's the same, yeah, that's the same exact footprint, yeah.
Okay. Exact footprint.
Okay.
That is so hard to read, there's so many marks on it.
So is the new footprint gonna be exactly the same?
No, the new footprint will be different, but it will be within those, that corridor of the twenty-seven and a half and fifty-five. So in other words, no part of it will be closer than the twenty-seven and a half, no part of it further than that.
Yeah.
So it'll fit that same corner, as it were.
And that's the first.
I don't know, I have a way of doing it, if you're expanding the building, I really don't know a lot of the way of doing it.
Yeah. And that's the first part, we got to prove.
It seemed to be what the DEP asked for, that's.
So you're gonna be about seven, just under eight feet from that right of way, this corner of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we ever determine if there was a distance on the right of way you had to be away from?
No. Here's where I'm at with this, because of all of the stuff that went on at the sidewalk and whatnot, I would love to see.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I'd love to do another sidewalk. And I would like to see the proposed house, the back or the front, the street side staked. And the right of way staked, so we can have a visual of where that right of way actually is. And where those, that wall, that, that street side wall of that structure would actually be.
And every tree that's coming down to be tagged? As such?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure about, I, you know, I'm not the surveyor, so I'll see.
Sure.
And I can tell you right now, he's, he's got a, he's got a, on his phone that says, I'm not taking on any new work.
He's already working on it.
Yeah, well, he worked on this two years ago.
Yeah. I mean, that's gonna have to be done right off anyway, cause you're gonna have to have access for. You know, if this move forward, you're gonna have to provide that access as you.
Oh, I agree, I, I, I'm just saying, I don't, I have no control over him and I will ask him to get out there as soon as possible.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, but I think that's what I'm gonna need personally, in order to make a decision, just because there was a lot of question on where that right of way actually sat. Where the structure was actually going to be, and we had a butters at the sidewalk.
Yeah, sure.
Um, with those same questions.
I understand, yeah, I understand.
How's the rest of the board feel?
I agree, I couldn't even come close to making a decision on this without seeing everything staked out.
Yeah.
Especially since there's been revisions from when we did the sidewalk. I'd like to see it staked out.
Yeah, it did. Um, yeah, the, the, the location of the building is pretty much the same as what the original one was, it's not much different.
Yeah, but it wasn't staked when we were there, no, no.
I should say, the location of the back of the building is about the same as what it is.
Yeah, it's nice to have a visual though, because things on paper don't look the same.
Yeah, because the original. Yeah, 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 no, I understand. I will see what I can do to get him out there.
Okay, alright, so I think that would be our next step, honestly.
You wanna set a date, I think the best thing to do to set a date and then, you know, I'll see if I can get him to get out there before that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can let you know, we can email you the date, because we have three other, no, two other sidewalks that we have to actually schedule in tonight's meeting.
Yeah.
So we need to pick a day where we can get all three of those done, kind of simultaneously. So we can email you, unless you know specific days that you absolutely can't do this.
I can do it anytime.
Okay.
No, it's getting, like I said, it's getting him out there to stake this out, and then use it, that's gonna be good. I mean, this isn't anything you're gonna try to do for Christmas anyway, right?
No.
No.
If everybody could just sign the login sheet, it would really be very, very much.
Dana didn't even say hi to me.
So, and if you can have that footprint state, whether. It'd be good too, so we can see that, right?
Yes.
I wanna see that back wall.
Yeah.
Yep.
Street side.
The, the, the new, you're talking about the new building you want.
Yeah, the, the new should be side wall in conjunction to the right of way.
Yeah. Yep. Yep, yep.
And tree.
Trees that are coming down to be flagged. As part of the revegetation plan, I'd like to see where the new trees are gonna be. I mean, if, if we're gonna be staking, let's stake it all. My, and I'd like to see on the ground staking where that proposed septic tank pump location. Which is about eight inches from the right wing.
Yeah. But it crosses the line, crosses the right way?
Correct. So I'd like to see that staked out.
Yeah, and that, that location is different than what the, um. It's different than what the, was on the, um.
Design?
Design, because, because they wanted to push the building back, it's, you know, it's, sure, you're gonna have to move it. Uh.
Oh, the other thing.
You just want the tag, you just want the tag, the septic, the leak field.
Yeah, Dana, I didn't happen to notice, um. Right now, you've got the blue arrows indicating the direction of drainage approximate.
Yeah.
Um, right now, there's a drainage that goes under the porch area on the house?
Yeah, 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 where's that gonna go?
And I don't, I'd like.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's going on?
He has a plan on that, it's not gonna go under the new house, so I mean, it's a good.
Why not, it's such a good id, location.
We'd like to see the plan for that, what are you, what are, what's the plan for that drainage?
Do you want an engineered drainage plan?
Situation, well, we just wanna know where that's going.
My concern is with the sloping there, uh, the other thing is, with no topo being done with the sloping there. It did appear, you know, Mister Estes had brought up a concern, but that water that's currently. Staying on the lot and ending up in the river. If you guys grade out, could be diverted onto the neighboring property, which is certainly not ideal.
Correct.
Cause that's changing someone else's property for your own.
Right.
Benefit, so I'd like to see how that water's gonna stay on this property. With part of the grading plan and all that.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have to, I'll have to see about.
Yeah, I know this is getting complicated. Things are so tight, there's, you know.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of ways to skin this cat, I get that, but.
Yeah, but that drainage piece under that porch cannot stay.
Absolutely. Well, if it doesn't stay, that's my concern, I'd like, where does that water go now, if it's, if we're diverting it to someone else?
You want to stake the new building, you want to stake the right of way.
And the new septic tank location?
Stake the septic tank and. The, knock trees. Um. And you want a drainage plan. Um, you need that drainage plan before you do this, the, um.
No.
No, it's just gonna be, it's just gonna be in the approval.
Yeah, cause in reality, it should stay right in the same spot. Cause the house is moving back.
Wow, like.
Well, the water is.
It goes underneath the.
Yeah, but the house.
It goes through into the water, it's open.
Right. But I mean, the house is moving, so that water can stay in the same location. Right down the driveway, I mean, if you look at where these arrows are. That keeps it from.
We'll also need erosion control.
It's on here, I'll save that as a name.
Yeah, I've got the, I showed like that line, this erosion control.
Oh, it's on, huh? Okay.
That's.
I think I have two different, I do have two different maps, yeah.
Yeah, the, the only difference between them is one of them's got the, uh, the new building, the other one's only has the.
Yeah.
Which one's the P D F, which was the, the whole building just pushed back.
I think that's it for now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Possible to get a copy of that new map that he just gave you guys?
There you go.
Thank you.
I can tell you that the water always came down that road and right down by that pine tree, between.
Yeah.
My fireplace and that pine tree and went right out. And I always maintained the road, but last year, the gentleman came to me and told me he didn't want me on his property anymore, but I maintained the road.
Can you tell me who you are?
I'm Wayne.
Okay, sorry.
I'm probably just give the property to.
Okay, gotcha.
To Chris.
Okay.
That's what, like, we don't wanna get into that, we, we just worried about the drainage, where that's gonna go. And also it shows parking area crap coming across my property line, as it's showing that drawing, the original one.
The original one. No, that's not what it shows, that just shows that's where the gravel is, it doesn't say that they, he's gonna park there.
Well, no, it's just.
I'm just showing that's where the.
No.
Well, I'm just.
That's what I'm saying.
All that is, is a lot of where the gravel is, it's hasn't, you know, he shows the property line ends there, he doesn't.
Yeah.
Well, at the sidewalk, I specifically asked where he was going to park, and you pointed to that location, that that's where he was going to park.
Right, what he's talking about, it goes over the line a little bit, and that's just, all this is showing here is this is where the gravel.
It's just the way it's.
Oh, okay.
It's a lot.
If I were not, I'm calling to park on his property.
Okay.
We always thought that the line came right down behind my fireplace, but when he had a survey, the line is actually over to the pine tree now.
Yeah.
So, some of that area, what'd you want us to?
Yeah, so, that area.
Oh.
Is my land, which we never thought was.
Gotcha, okay.
So, stake new building, knock trees, stake septic tank, drainage plan, stake right of way, so I get everything?
But if that roadway is maintained, where we've always maintained it, because the Michaels had a year before we first bought in the early sixties, the family. We always maintained that roadway, roadway coming down over the hill, the water would go right between that pine tree and the fireplace.
Right.
Did any of this house caught anything that overflowed, cause one of us had.
Since I haven't been maintaining the last couple of years, now it's, the silt has come down, built up by. Ahead of the fireplace and the tree, and now all the water's coming onto my way, more during time to meet his, his building.
Does it something about a revegetation plan, something too, you wanted to see something about that, or?
Yeah, whatever you're taking out. For trees, you gotta show us what you're putting back, and then.
And all the.
Lasts and whatnot from where you're disturbing. Erosion and revegetation usually go hand in hand.
For this taking out, are you taking out the new footprint, or the, the existing, the footprint that is moving over to the?
The one.
The, okay, so you're, you're good on that?
Yeah, we'll stake that, but be aware, this may change slightly, it'll still be in that.
I just wanna see the location.
Yeah, that would be good. Yeah, as long as, just that back, the back.
We just wanna see how far it is from that right of way, that's basically what we wanna see.
Okay. Okay, yep.
And if it stays in the area, we relocate you.
Yep.
And, so can I ask one more question, David?
Yeah.
So on the drainage, when it, when it's, when it's functioning properly and you're maintaining the road, it's going between, you said the fireplace and the, and the.
And the pine tree.
So, and so that's technically on your property?
Yeah, we're in, across, yeah, the.
Still, okay. So, okay.
Yes, a corner of my property, I just don't want it coming down in the front, where I see it, finally get grass growing.
Right.
Having all the silt coming down and covering up my room and grass and killing it.
Can you say your name?
Oh, sorry, James Monday, attorney for the.
Perfect, I just want it for the camera.
Thank you.
Anything else, guys?
Yeah.
Anybody?
David?
No, I think we're good.
Alright, alright.
So we'll let you know?
Yep.
What the date and the time will be. It'll probably be in afternoon.
Hopefully, we won't have too much mess in it.
Yeah.
Alright, very good, very good.
Alright, thanks, John.
You want this, yeah?
This is the old one.
Sarah, do you wanna look up either?
That is, that's the updated one, this is, the one you have is updated, but this one is older.
Yeah, we can get to it. Hey, can you, can, can you get John, have a, do you have another copy of a map, the new one?
It's John.
Uh, I, I can give the one maybe.
Okay. Can you copy something this size?
Yeah.
Jen will make you a copy.
Thanks, Sarah.
You're welcome.
She's got one here, I can start with her.
I can make her, it's okay, Jen can make a copy.
You're the best, I like, you got it.
Okay, so any questions, maybe you could probably call me in, or there's any downlines and.
Okay.
Do you have another card on my, or, it's just opposite of mine?
Oh, yes, okay, oh, okay, got it, okay.
Thank you, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we gotta remember to have people say who they are, cause they're wearing a mask. So nobody tells who they are?
Yeah. Alright.
Mask man.
Yeah.
Wait, just one second, this is not that.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that one's. Someday we'll get an easy one.
The thing is. With John. Is every time you ask him to do something, it seems like it's a.
It's not hers, you know?
He never wants, oh no, that was mine. He never wants to do it.
I get it, cool, cause it's time. It's not our issue.
But, you know what I mean, like he's always trying to tell me why he, it doesn't matter, and I'm like, no, it totally does. Like, just do it.
What do we have for one twenty-four? Is there anything for that?
We don't.
Do we have anything for that one, Jen?
Hebert?
Mr. Hebert?
Yeah. There's nothing new in our packet, right?
That was the one at the end, right?
Yeah, but we did the walk through.
He's, he's gonna be here, Joe.
Okay, do you have anything new, or has he brought something new?
No, he was gonna, um, bring updated. My phone.
Okay. Yeah, there.
Cause he wants.
I don't fit, I don't see him.
No, he's not. No, doesn't look like he's out there.
Matthew Hebert out there? No? No, okay.
What's Hebert?
That was the walk through on the water next to the one we did that was Draymond.
Next to Draymond, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We got to be blocked in.
Yeah.
Yeah, for an hour.
Alright, so.
Yeah, but we didn't realize we're that long.
Yeah, that was an interesting. Alright, Mel, you out there? Mel, Tom?
Yeah.
Wow. They're usually around, this is gonna be a quick one, yeah?
They might be outside.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to go outside, isn't it?
She doesn't really miss, we need to, we need to just get you a, a phone. Yeah. We need to.
Andy's, Andy's calling Mel.
We should give our little numbers every time, you know, like, and we just call your number, like at the deli.
No.
No, how come?
Cause she has braces, she doesn't wanna think about it, I'm saying, we just.
It's easy.
Oh. Yes, she's on diet too, she doesn't wanna think about it.
It's easier to do like the DMV does, and then the number just like goes on the little.
On the flash inside.
Now serving.
We can just hit a button, and then we skip a number, and that really gets people wound up. Is that why you got braces, cause you can wear your mask and nobody will know?
No, I have to, I'm correcting a bite, I'm correcting my jaw. I have a.
Oh, so you did send that letter to the.
Yes.
Yeah, it took him a year to come in and sign it, but he got it done.
I did, I sent mine right back.
Why, why, does he have to come, why are we doing a electronics image?
Yeah, I did, I did, I did mine in PDF, I sent it back.
Why can't, yeah, why can't we do a electronics image, just you don't have.
The only thing that we can use, um, would be DocuSign. I have DigiSign, do you have DocuSign?
Yeah.
Oh.
Now, if we have to go back to Zoom, we should do an account like the, I went on that Conservation Commission meeting the other night, and they have their own Zoom holes set up, and it worked good.
Well, I'm not running it, so we gotta learn Zoom.
But we designated you to it. You got a promotion. No, I was just thinking, so we had, it would probably be easier to keep the records of it, right?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking. Nobody?
Oh, that's not helping, Jen?
Good.
I know that Mr. Hebert's gonna be here.
Okay, we can just throw him at the end.
Well, just hold on, I don't know.
Yep. Alright. Paul Delisle?
Do you say Delisle or Delil?
I don't know.
Delisle.
Delisle.
I, did I get it right?
Yeah.
Did we get, did we get it right, to Delisle?
Yeah, you did.
Alright, see?
Not everybody does.
Good thing I called that one, huh, Sarah?
Yeah. Cause I was calling you Delil.
Delil is the same in French.
So listen, oh, that was your.
I heard that one.
That was your Berlin side, kinda.
That was.
Should I sign in again?
Yes, please. So this was the, had the older septic system that was started, and that's this lot, right?
Yeah, so it has, it has a foundation on it now, full foundation, a septic system, and a portwell.
Yeah.
All on it. And after we had a survey done by corner post, the, it, the, the foundation was close to one side. Didn't need a setback on, on one side. So.
One side?
Yeah, one.
Like side blind?
Yeah, so one side is very close to the border, if you look at.
It's currently right on the border.
Is the same as this drawing here?
Yeah.
Twenty. Twenty.
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, so that's the, that's the one, that's what we're proposing.
This is the proposed.
Yeah, just to put it right in the middle.
So you, so you're looking to get rid of the foundation, it's already.
I would rather have the foundation, because it's a really.
You'd rather keep it?
I'd rather, because it's, it's in very good shape.
It is.
And it wouldn't, it wouldn't do any, I mean, it would be much better for the area, because it wouldn't, wouldn't have to tear it up.
Less disturbance, I'm loving this.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a very nice foundation, it's in very good shape. It just happens to be very close to one side of the border, but the up, that side that's on here is a common law for the association.
It's just a walk through that goes down to the.
Are you, are you familiar with this property?
I'm very, I, I walked up around that foundation and walked the neighboring land a million times.
Okay, but you don't think you're a conflict of interest?
Why, cause I've walked on the neighboring land?
I'm just asking, you have a lot to say about it, so I wanna just make sure.
I'm familiar with it, it's a.
Okay.
Yeah, I've, I've sold a ton.
I have to ask the question.
Oh, yeah, 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 I, I'm familiar with it, cause I've been on it a, probably a hundred times.
Okay.
It's a nice old.
So this isn't showing us where the existing foundation is?
No, um, no, um.
Right here?
You may have one that does, that one does right there, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Where's the building permit for that foundation?
Uh, well, I have it in the original package from a year ago, um.
Is it in here?
It should be. It's not, I'm wondering.
Yeah, it was in, the stuff you emailed us, it was in, I remember seeing that.
Yeah, so I came a year ago, and we ended up calling out a contractor, I don't own the property, I've been trying to buy it for a year and a half.
You're the contractor.
I have a contract now, again, with the, with the, the guy in Massachusetts, Stanway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
This is the original.
You know, it's actually a building permit for that foundation is in there?
Yeah, it says build a thirty, five thirty four, we have an eight by twenty-seven porch, that was back in two thousand and seven. And. It's, this is what was with it, which doesn't show that it's three feet, it shows that it's moved, it's like off the line.
Okay, let's see that.
Sure. Just want to see.
So.
Don't lose that.
I'm ready. I don't lose anything.
Um, Paul, quick question, so. This is saying, if I understand this correct, it's nine inches. Three quarters of a foot.
One of the corners, I think, is probably, yeah, whatever that's.
The corner of the foundation is point seven six feet from the line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we can use that existing foundation, because it's less disturbance to that property?
Sure.
And also, um, it's okay if we're not following all those side setbacks?
Oh, understood, yeah.
How do you build the house though, without, you know, get on that?
Well, and my next question was gonna be, you know, that's exactly where I was going with that, was, wh- what's your. Wh- what's your plan of, of. I guess approaching the common law owners, or whatever, for access during the building process, to be able to.
Well, um, so you've walked it, so, on that side, it's, it's kind of banking's a land, uh.
Sure, and it's just a bunch of ration things that are down there.
Gravel. Yeah, so what they did is they, they dug the hole and they left piles of gravel everywhere.
Yeah.
And on that side of it, matter of fact, there are lots, I have pictures I can show you, um, but there are a bunch of piles of gravel, which it really happened to evened out. I can't imagine anybody in the association would have a problem with me evening out that land, you know, that gravel.
Right.
And on top of that, I mean, there's like garbage right, right, you go, you look down, I can show you pictures, this.
Oh, no, I've seen it.
Yeah, there's kind of garbage from, um, like old debris, I don't know if there was something there before.
They, they looked like they used, might, might have been like some kind of an old shed or shack or something that was knocked down, and they, they kind of just knocked it down and threw that in the gully.
Exactly.
Essentially, the problem, and, and I, I agree that likely anything you're gonna do is likely to clean up the area, but still. For us to approve something that's three quarters of a foot from the line, without, and knowing that you're gonna have to go over that line to clean up that area, just, just the gravel if nothing else.
Yeah.
You know? Says, okay, well, have you approached them for permission to do that, that's what I'm asking, or, the, the.
That's what I'm asking, or, the, the likelihood is they probably all be good, but have you approached them?
Well, I haven't, I mean, it's kind of one step at a time.
Sure.
This whole process, you know, I've gotten another septic design again, because knowing that one could be out there is just to make sure it was still, uh, that I could do another septic design based on today's standards, which I did get, and uh, but certainly I, I could easily go to the people and, and ask for permission before I set foot on the other side, out, out, you know?
Yeah.
Do you have the actual?
This was where, the actual where it was built?
Not this one.
That was a proposed.
So here's an application for, where's the permit? Like, this is just the application.
That's.
Looks like it's right there.
It's in pile of papers, so that's all, those are the ones that I have, so it doesn't make her mess.
Okay, no, I don't wanna come, I don't wanna mix up her papers and my papers. This was this.
Yeah, that's from her.
Yeah.
And so is the, I believe.
That was from her too?
Yes. That's not included in your package. This one may be one though that's easier and cleaner to back it up. You're gonna get farther from the water? You solve all the setback issues?
I don't know.
How far are we from the water now? It's like ninety seven, nine, so.
Then we're gonna get a hundred and then, so we get beyond the hundred feet of the water. What's the well already existing?
It's a point well, yeah, in the front, yeah.
It is, okay. What's the condition of the lot right now?
It's a, it's, it's empty.
And um, we'll have to do a site walk anyway, I just.
And it's, but, but they left kind of mounds of.
That's what I mean.
And the problem is, the mounds, you know, they look, you know, they've been kind of grown over.
I disagree with a new foundation. You're gonna get less than three feet further from the water, and yeah, you're gonna fix a sideline setback, but you're gonna have so much more disturbance to that property.
That one side is a lot of that.
Yeah, but looking at these pictures, I think you're gonna have to disturb the whole property, cause it looks like it's a mess.
Well, we're gonna just do a site walk, so we'll find out.
Right, it is, yeah. It looks like you just gotta flatten the whole property anyway to make it as usual.
Well, not the whole property, just there's a couple of side of the, you know, looking down on.
Around the foundations, you know, looking down on.
A lot of land, which area where, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's.
Was this an approved subdivision by the board original?
It's an approved subdivision.
Yeah.
Oh.
I was just wondering how.
This was approved prior to.
I wonder if he did a step on this foundation?
This was done at the beginning of the sixties.
Wasn't.
Oh. It was prior to any of the subdivision regulations, I think it was just when you back, just draw lines and record something.
Right. Right, yeah. No, I was just wondering how that common lot was set up all.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was.
That, and that common lot only serves maybe four, five properties.
Oh, it doesn't.
What is it for?
It's, there's a walkway that goes down to where you can launch kayaks or those little picnic tables or stuff like that.
Yeah, exactly.
You wanna put this fancy house right there?
Well, it's not that fancy, it's.
The day after the permit is issued.
Um, yeah, it's kind of a square house for a square foundation. It's based on it, yeah.
The, the, the permit is issued.
He's fine.
Yeah, foundation is signed off to get that permit issued.
Oh, yeah, so that's legit. That must have been one of the papers that was lost in his shed.
It was quick. It was quick.
And so he had to rewrite it real quick.
Well, I think we oughta walk it before we decide whether or not.
Yeah, we need a site walk.
Yeah. To see what it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to pick a day for sight walks.
Yeah.
Cause we need this one, which is.
Okay, so this one, just so you know, you're gonna have to go all the way through Acton to get to this one, there's no access to Lebanon.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, you've gotta go this, you've gotta go halfway between Acton, the Milton Mills and Lebanon into Acton up on the bridge.
Oh, yes, yes, now, now I'm ready to go, yeah.
So how long, like if we did the ones right here, like fifteen minutes from there to there?
Uh, fifteen or twelve, it's all dirt road, two, probably twenty.
Dolby Road.
Come on!
It's true, Dolby's gonna be a long ways, cause you gotta come all the way out by the pond, right, and then all the way up over Frontal Shore.
So Dol, Dolby and Rocky Cove are not too far from each other.
Right. Right, but, but getting to this one's gotta be at least twenty minutes.
Well, we're gonna have to go down Heath Road.
Right, and then come up.
And then come up there.
The Borough Mills Road.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good little hike.
It's at least, at least twenty minutes.
Yeah.
So we gotta. Truck's gonna be finding enough daylight to do them all in the same day.
Are we going to?
Oh, we gotta go to.
And then two oh two.
So we gotta do Ridgewood.
Could do ice skates when it freezes over and do.
Yeah, that's probably faster, right? Snowmobiles or something?
Nice.
We have Dolby, too bad it's not summer.
I'm liking where your head's at.
Oh, you have a boat?
We're gonna need Jeremy's boat.
Yes, Jen?
We have, um.
Let's put this off to the summer, when we can take a boat.
I try not to take a boat down there. I, I try not to boat down there too much.
So would you like?
Yeah, there's not, what do we gotta do?
There's not that deep.
So we have, one of the people who goes back, we have fifty Dolby for that, um, for our street family though.
It's not, it's an easy place to get mucked up in.
So it's all under there now, kinda.
I know, it's, it's, yeah.
You live, you live over there, yeah?
The twenty two Ridgewood.
No, I'm on the, I, I'm on the water every day though, so that's why.
And then right, from the two oh two, the Avery properties.
Yeah.
Um, he wants to set up a site.
Who?
Now you want?
Yeah.
Who?
So stack.
Um, right, yeah.
The, yeah.
Well, we have to do one hundred Rocky Cove.
Yeah.
Twenty two Ridgewood.
Yeah.
Fifty Dolby.
Mm-hmm.
And who else?
Uh, Route two oh two.
The red place?
Mm-hmm.
And.
That's not all gonna happen in one day.
There's no way, I mean, that's, that's a couple hours at least. And we need daylight.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Can I just ask, you were just talking about this, uh, Route two oh two property, Jen?
It's all, yeah.
Yeah, I was.
Did we get the things we asked for yet?
He.
I was gonna say, I knew very drill.
He did his survey or came in today and spoke a bit.
Yes, okay. Take a right, yeah, a sharp right, yeah.
So, and.
Okay, then they.
He wanted to come back and talk tonight, when I said.
Yeah, we've done a couple out there.
I know I have, I don't recall you being there.
Well, I think he was.
Yeah, I did once.
Did you?
Sure.
Yeah.
You were brand new.
Well, let's find who's on the table.
That was my first one, I think.
My only concern is, we're asking for a site walk, which is lovely, but if he didn't get the, I mean, said, we need to serve.
He said the survey, the surveying's all done.
Where is it?
They completed.
Cool, I'd like to see it before we do a site walk.
So, wow.
Yeah, I mean, that's just.
Yeah, maybe he needs to come back, cause he just did his little workshop, but now we need to see the application, and we need to see the survey, so he can be put on the next agenda, and then we can schedule our site walk from there.
Yeah.
After that, yeah, alright, so let's get back to Paul then.
Yeah. Uh, wow.
Gonna keep you on point tonight. Good luck. Alright, so.
Yeah, when do you wanna go?
Any good weather, daylight?
Okay, so April fourteenth.
She puts her boat in.
I don't have a boat.
Yeah, it looks like this.
Yeah.
You know, Thursday is pretty.
There you go, Dave.
Thursday's sunny, forty one.
On April fourteenth?
No, no. No, I guess that would be, what the, uh. Where's the seventy nine? Ten.
When do we wanna do this, do we wanna do it in December or in January?
You, I'll work around you guys, you. I think Andy and Dave, Andy's going with the scheduling difficulties.
Not really, he just likes to pretend.
What day of the week works for everybody? What day of the week's April fourteenth? Oh, that's Wednesday.
Oh, shoot, Wednesday's a birthday, you know, I don't know, what day do you wanna do, I definitely can't do weekends with my job.
If we're gonna do afternoons, that Friday didn't work bad for me, good falls, right?
But now it's getting dark at like three thirty, so we have to go. Yeah, you can take a Friday off, but you're not gonna be in Aruba or anything, are you?
Try to keep, try to do the twenty.
Through, see you at eleven.
I, I got, I got plenty of time on the twenty fifth. You free Jeremy on the twenty fifth?
I'm never free. Very expensive.
He's saying Christmas.
You available, Jen?
Jen's available, her kids are in college.
We wanna try the weekend, how was everybody's week in between Christmas and New Year's?
I'll work around you whenever.
Um, okay, so I can't do the, I'm in a wedding on the first and the thirty first, so I can't do that Thursday or Friday after Christmas.
Okay.
I'll be gone.
Alright.
But I could do Tuesday or Wednesday.
Do I try for Wednesday that week?
Oh, yeah, cause you're on vacation now.
No, I won't be, I'll be still working.
Wednesday, the thirtieth is what you're saying?
I'm just thinking, so I'm a little slower that week usually.
Hmm, you wanna, okay, what are we doing, we're doing, which is this property address?
Twenty two Ridgewood.
Ridgewood, so you wanna do like noon?
Yeah, or eleven, or.
Eleven AM?
Yeah, wanna try eleven AM on the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Does that work, David?
Sure.
What's the thirtieth?
It's a Wednesday. And then you said how long, like twenty minutes to?
Give or take.
It's gotta be.
So if we say, we'll probably be there how long, like, I always like to say half hour, but we end up being there for an hour, so.
On the Ridgewood one, I don't think.
Pretty small, I.
Ridgewood is, I mean, it's, the other thing is, I don't, I think one of the things that kept us at the other one longer time was all the measurements.
Right, and this, this is a clean lot, basically.
It's, it's done, okay, dealing with the butter and all that stuff, this is, yeah.
And it looks like.
This is just looking, uh.
I were planning, it looks like.
Thirty minutes is fine, so we can do like probably noon time for Rocky Cove.
Yeah, I would think so, this one should be straightforward, you're quite a ways off the water too. This is, right, you're on a hundred feet almost.
Carpool.
You can toss a rocky cold.
Yeah.
So, on Ridgewood, you're saying eleven?
Yeah, let's try it.
And this is for the thirty.
Does that work for you, Jen?
Sure.
And then.
Are you gonna come back here afterwards or no?
Um, no, cause we're gonna have a meeting like the week after, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have one for Sunday.
Um, how far are we to Dolby from Rocky Cove, they're like in the same vicinity?
Uh, Rocky Cove to Dolby is, is five minutes.
So we can do that one at the same day?
Yeah.
And just get that one done, Rocky Cove, I feel we're gonna be there for a while, cause I think the waters are gonna show up.
We probably will. I think we should make that one, we should go from Ridgewood to Rocky Cove, and then we have to leave Rocky Cove at a certain point to go to our next scheduled Dolby.
That's, I like that.
At what time?
Dolby?
I put noon for Rocky Cove.
Oh, see, I, I, I.
You think noon is good?
I think twelve forty five is great, I think that was a great idea.
So twelve forty five at Dolby?
So we have to leave at twelve thirty.
Then Route two oh two?
No.
You wanna set that?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna do that one after he comes with his pa- application.
Okay, if he brings it in beforehand, you must get it at the same time.
So it's okay if I go with you guys?
Nope.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah, no, yes, it's open to the public.
Okay, great.
When?
A wire look up, he was getting the survey done.
We said, that's right, we said we were gonna see it as major, well, then we can take the next, we can go to review the survey and look it up and then we'll go from there.
I still think he should come in.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I agree.
Yeah.
He wants to.
I'm not ready to go do a site walk yet, cause I don't even know what, what, what his proposal was.
Yeah, because even what he brought to us was just like, here, I wanna add this, and it was just like a square.
Yeah, so this is his.
Okay, so, sorry, twelve o'clock, no, eleven AM?
Okay, um.
On the thirtieth?
Eleven AM, yep. And I'll send an email to Jen like a day earlier in case cancellation or something, or.
Yeah, she'll, she'll reach out to you too, if something happens.
Also keep in mind, it's, it's very steep going down there, so if the weather's, like if we had a storm a couple, day or two before, you never know. Um, I don't know how it, you know, I mean, you know, you've been there, it's a, it's a.
The, the past couple winters, they've been maintained.
Sorry, Andy's gonna drive.
Yeah, maybe that's what I noticed in the last year or so, but it should be good.
Yeah, Andy will drive us on the super duty.
Yes, okay.
Thank you for coming.
Great, thanks a lot, so I'll see you on the thirtieth.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. Yeah.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Have a nice Christmas.
Yeah, goodbye.
Thanks.
Well, um, Hebert's here.
I think he's gotta wait though, because.
Oh, yeah, cause he wasn't here when we got it.
I thought we could come a little bit later, because I thought we had other things. Someone's left.
Alright, so we got through that one. That one should be a pretty easy site walk though. Everything, getting there is gonna be hard, right?
Who's the other person that was out there?
Uh, they're here for this.
Oh. We'll get that away. So we got?
We have, um, Dolby, we have Dolby waiting.
Oh, the. We're gonna put them at the. Yeah, you say the name.
Huh?
How do you say that one?
Um, I would say Deirdre Sano.
Diane. Let's just go Diane, yeah. Ready, is Diane present? Diane?
Diane.
Diane? Is Diane? No? Hebert, okay.
Dolby.
Okay. Dolby fifty Dolby, alright, I guess you're up, man. You, you jumped in, dude.
She's not here. They sign in?
I thought it was seven o'clock, it was six, you guys, huh? That was pretty night. My bad.
Well, it was busy, so I said if you came a little bit later, I thought it was, at least twenty.
Yeah. Good thing you drove like a madman.
Only ran five people off the road, I was here.
I didn't kill anybody though. So, I guess what, what we need to do is move that camp back two and a half feet. Yeah, might go with my original plans and just move it back, uh, I ended up doing it three feet, so. Basically, that's all I did with that.
When did you say back, it was away from the water?
Oh, yeah, yes, just way clear.
Yeah, away from the water. But I wanna keep everything the same. And there was nothing else that needed to be done, that's why I was like, no, right?
We need to improve the location, right, and the, and the size.
That high watermark, that, that was the one that was messing us up. And then, on the front of the camp, we're not gonna do a, a deck all the way across, I'm just gonna do this side because the way the thing ran. So instead of having the deck all the way across, I had enough room to have, um, fourteen foot of deck there. And maintain twenty five feet.
Yeah, I think as long as you're at that twenty five feet, I think we're good.
Yeah. Yeah. And I saw plenty of room for, you know, the tanks and everything, so.
Yeah.
Um.
And then, we gotta figure the square footage, right, and that.
I thought we figured that out already, that he was okay.
Yeah.
Cause he could go up to, um, let me find my notes.
So is it like thirteen hundred square feet?
I have your.
Be excellent, we measured it, right?
Nine hundred and thirty six.
Yeah, that's what's on here, nine hundred and thirty six. Okay.
That's what I read too. And he was like, he was within what he could do.
Okay, what do we, I don't remember what we measured, Jen should have had that, right?
You, oh, yeah, you and I measured it.
Yeah, we did measure it.
Do you have the measurements, what we took?
Would you want, uh, would you want the measurements of?
The actual size of the existing bill, all the existing.
Twenty, okay, twenty six by twenty six on the main part.
Yeah.
Um, the deck was, uh, six feet by twelve feet, I believe, if you need the deck.
Yeah, we do.
And then, uh, the shower was four foot by six foot.
You have good memory.
And then the shed was. What the hell did I do with it? It's fourteen and a half by. I think it's fourteen and a half. Was it three hundred and thirty eight square feet on the, on the shed?
I never figured it.
Do you want this checked out, Jen?
Sure. Thank you very much.
I do.
I'll get a receipt to you.
Awesome.
Are we streaming, Jen, did you fix it?
It's not showing up, but it's recording at the same time, so I'll just upload it afterwards.
The work sheet will be there somewhere. Yeah, the, the previous eighty five square feet, nine hundred and thirty eight square feet on the shed. Yeah, the, the previous eighty-five square feet, nine hundred and thirty-eight square feet on the shed.
Yeah, so I come, the original was nine seventy-two twenty-five, I come up with, on our measurement.
How much?
Nine seventy-two twenty-five. Whoops, I forgot the shower even, hang on. So nine hundred and ninety-nine twenty-five.
Nine ninety-nine twenty-five?
Yeah, it's a total existing, what we measured.
So he can go up to, he can.
Twelve ninety-nine?
That's what I'm trying, my thing's like all messed up. Saying I can add like two ninety-nine seventy-eight.
It comes twelve ninety-nine.
Twelve ninety-nine, yeah.
Yeah.
So we can go thirteen hundred?
Alright.
Can we give him thirteen hundred?
Can we give him thirteen hundred? Okay, so, and we're at the twenty-five, we've, we definitely have it in the best spot. There is not a spot.
I think, yeah, I think we're good, because his, his square footage, he, he can go as, as high as thirteen hundred square feet.
Yeah.
He's twenty-five feet from the water on all of it, he moved his deck to make sure that was.
Yeah.
Right, I think he's good.
Yeah, no, I just, I see his proposal, what, how about the height?
Well, the height, this one here was, um, it's two, I have this one drawn up tall, and I'm gonna drop it down to an eight pick, so it's gonna bring it down a couple feet.
Yeah. Okay, cuz we gotta stay under the twenty, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is it twenty?
I'll be at twenty, at mid.
Yeah, at mid.
At mid.
Twenty, yes.
Yeah, and your lot's relatively flat, so it isn't gonna.
Yes.
Yeah, so as long as he stays at the twenty, and thirteen hundred square feet for your, your thing.
Twenty, yeah. Yeah. And you can't be twenty-five feet off the high water?
Beautiful.
You're good.
I think we're good, yeah.
Beautiful. That's music to my ears.
You like that?
Yeah. So it wasn't that bad besides the fact that we made you wait there?
No, it's alright. It's, um, I would have liked to have been digging last month, but, hey, should I get equipment to get in there, right?
Yeah.
So.
Alright.
Awesome.
So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the thirteen hundred square feet, twenty-five feet from the high watermark.
I'll second.
The deck on that side and twenty-foot height.
You have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Motion is passed.
Do you need a copy of this, or?
Jen will, Jen ought to have a copy, shouldn't she? Yeah. She'll draw, she'll write you up the letter.
Beautiful.
So what happens then, we just get a letter and then go?
Yeah, we'll sign our facts, findings and conclusions form.
You'll need a bill of.
That's just so that you know where the.
Oh, you.
You'll take that with you.
We don't, we didn't, we don't have erosion control.
Saying that you know where the, who's gonna do the list.
We don't.
Do we have a, does the show erosion control?
I need to send that, yeah.
Well, this is the old one.
Right, but that was kinda what we were going by.
So, what did you know?
I think it was in a note on the sign, was it?
Something like that, then I'll get that, put that to you, not really receive that to you.
Beautiful, beautiful.
There was a Dana, so it's usually on here.
Um, and then I'll see him to grab the permit with us.
Yeah.
So there should be that, there's no, this one.
Um. Thank you.
Hmm, no, I never saw it on.
Yeah.
Well, this is quite helpful.
So he can just.
Yeah, you don't even say it, no, see.
Yeah.
And.
We just need.
Not because of signers.
Signers update by the side.
The only thing we will need, it'd be nice to have, you get a drawing showing the erosion control.
Yeah, there is no vegetation, cuz.
Yeah, and Dana didn't put it on this one.
Right, right, so while we're working, you want the bales of hay?
Yeah, or self fence, or stump grindings.
Yeah, yeah.
No.
Stump grinder.
Yeah.
You can use that for.
Just a quiet eye, that would.
Oh wow.
Works good.
Um, I don't really know, that's the first I've seen of that map.
Yeah. Yeah. It is about, yeah.
I had.
Stump grinder.
Without property lines on it.
I gotta go.
Yeah.
I had just like, like a whole map.
It's accepted by.
It'll be the least expensive way.
Yeah, D E P accepted.
I'm really curious.
And how, so.
I'm gonna have to start selling these, so you work with it.
Yeah.
How big of a, 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 how tall of a mound, how wide?
Try to get it about a foot wide at the bottom, about a foot high.
Yeah.
But you can't sell any of those.
Usually ends up wider at the bottom just cuz you know, you already put it out.
Yeah, yeah.
I've already sold.
Or bales of hay, right?
Or bales of hay, that's true.
Which of us is easier to stay?
Nice, yeah, so fence, but.
Yeah, yeah.
They also sell logs now, erosion control logs.
Yeah.
There's, uh.
There's a, yeah, there's.
As long as it's installed correctly, it all works.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, so again.
So we should just.
I'm buying this one.
Update drawing, just showing the erosion control.
Should I have him?
If you could.
You wanna post, have him put erosion.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
On the lot, yeah, really are.
On the front, I think that should a copy.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the one I took out.
In Jen, we should also mention, there's no re vegetation needed for this one.
I feel like you're. Want a bigger house.
This one, that needed, okay.
Right.
Did you guys?
I really like the way he sent out right there.
I thought you gave me a copy of the, on that data we made.
Uh, Jen, do you have a copy, it says yes.
We have a re- show of the erosion control on it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, have Dana.
Dana reached out to me asking if I needed anything else on there.
Yeah, yeah, just have her put the erosion control on and.
Yeah.
And you get no, no vegetation, no revegetation needed, not taking anything out of it.
No re, no, we're still.
The driveway's bare, basically.
Yeah, beautiful.
Um, sight distance.
Beautiful, so we're all set?
Yeah, we're good, you very much, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
It's a hill, and it goes like this.
Very impressive, thank you.
I'll touch base with you.
You're welcome.
You don't go down that way, Mark Chau?
Actually, I do, I own a property right over here.
Drive that, actually.
I'm buying tonight, thank you, yeah.
Does that one hang up, is it empty lot?
No.
It's a house?
I'm not doing it, so. Alright.
Ah, it's a lot.
Now, what are you guys on to?
Nothing.
I'm just there chatting.
Fun? Side jobs?
We're just chatting.
Alright, you ready for Chris? Everybody ready?
Um, Chris isn't here, so we, this Matthew.
Okay. Dale here. Oh, Matt.
Is gonna be here. And, um, I don't have, that's my meeting completed.
Okay.
However, I can do up a letter and, um, just say it was approved or whatnot.
Yeah, and then we can just sign it after?
Yeah, and then I'll read the next one after that.
Oil Associates? Oil Associates?
Yes, sir.
Chris isn't here?
Chris is, yeah, he's got another, uh, thing he has in here, but hopefully he can, uh, he could replace it.
Yeah, after, he doesn't care about us now, we told him we were almost done.
Oh, not at all, he's texted me, and he's actually done with that, I can, uh, I can throw him on speakerphone.
Yeah. No, that's okay.
Just something, uh, specifically, but my name's Matt Kennedy, with Oil Associates, project manager.
We'll have you signing now.
Thank you. Alright. Throw my pad jungle in here.
How are we?
Good.
Good, are we?
Good, so yeah, um, I guess like Chris had another thing I do attend to, so, um, here to help answer any of your questions, ob- obviously, I'm representing, uh, we have Oil, we're representing two projects, um, and me, West Lebanon Road Solar for Renasolar, and Lebanon S C S G L L C for Dimension Energy. Um, so I think he's been here, I think he's had one point or meeting, two?
Oh, I think more than that even, two?
Yeah, we're at.
It's like every month, we're there.
We're, I don't have stats at this point, like basically we were here tonight, um, to see if any of butters stopped in to have anything else to say, but, um, other than that.
We're ready to.
We were signing tonight.
Yeah, we're ready to approve it.
Okay, awesome.
And I don't see anybody that came to you.
Yeah, I didn't see anyone out there, um, I brought the Mylars with me and the site plan, so, um, I guess like if you have any outstanding questions or anything, happy to go through it or, but.
Anybody.
Yeah.
Well, I think we've, we've gone over it many times with Chris and.
Sweet.
Seems like all the questions are answered and.
Yeah.
Excellent. Well.
I understand, you know, I wanna go on record, I understand the concerns of the butters and people in the area. And I empathize with them. Um, nobody likes any kind of big project of any sort of nature going on in their backyard. But, you know, I hope they recognize that the nature of, uh, the laws being what they are is you, you can use your land any way that is legally permissible. And they wouldn't want anybody to tell them they couldn't do the same on their property or, or, and I think the board all feels that way.
Right.
And while we care how they feel, at the same time is, they're doing the project that's a hundred percent legal, a hundred percent permissible, and they're able to do it according to all those rules. And, we, I don't know if the right word is put into the ring or not, but they've done, all, jumped through all the hoops they need to do to satisfy the concerns we have, and, you know, concerns of neighbors are, are valid to be listened to, but doesn't, doesn't mean the board can, uh, say, well, we're not gonna let this person do something on their land, cuz that's a dangerous precedent. Just because, you know, some neighbor has a concern, cuz next thing you know, you wanna build a garage on your land, and if your neighbor says, I don't like it, it's too big and too ugly. Well then, all of a sudden, boards are gonna start going, well, the neighbor doesn't want it, so therefore, we're not gonna let you have it, and it's just, it's not the right precedent to set, and nor legally are we even probably per, able to set that if we wanted to, so. Just wanted to go on record for that, for anybody that sees this later to know that we're doing what we have to do.
Well said. Anyth concerns David?
None.
None?
None, let's sign it.
Alright. I'm gonna do a hero tonight, man. Yeah, this was an easy day for you.
That's overstated. Um, so this is the Mylar.
I brought the wrong one. Is that both of them?
No, this is just one of them.
This is a Sharpie five point.
So this will be, this is a dimensional one?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, should I just lay it out here and just have you guys come around, or?
You want this Sharpie pen?
Yeah. Just so, so we are gonna sign tonight, Jen's gonna have to mail you the final approvals.
That's perfect.
Just cuz we, yeah, she hasn't finished with them yet.
No problem.
I don't know, why are you Andy?
What?
And do a motion to approve those.
Yes.
For Mylar.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Great.
You wanna come around and sign this, or?
Yeah.
It's gonna be easy to pass him in. Is your number two?
I'm number two.
Did it just right?
Don't get my crap.
Okay, we can get a few more of these done.
Oh, this way.
Well, this is what we do.
Let me say that, Jen.
So I probably should have put these out there too, I mean, I could probably use all of those.
This is Paul from that one, he said he was gonna go and check that.
Yeah, he did.
Okay, I'm back. I'll jump in, man. Are we doing pens on that one, or do we sign that one too, or?
We sign them all Jen, or just the last?
I'm not exactly sure, um.
Do we need to sign the paper copies too, or?
Yeah, we usually sign the copies on.
Okay.
All of them? All with the same pen?
Four of them or something.
Good sign, David, you know you're lying.
Yeah, he left that lunch break to go refill his generator, and I think he got home and he came back on.
That's good.
Yeah.
I didn't return to work.
I lost mine for an hour, but it's in there. That was before the store.
And. There's another one down here. Okay. Who's next, you're a new man.
Taking a paper back.
Oh, you got others, next project, too.
Yeah, sorry, there's two projects.
Take a break.
Yeah, also signature practice, I guess.
Uh, it's a little bit, like, and like, closing my mouth?
Do you, do you use, uh, maps, or do you, do you keep them, I don't exactly, do you need like record your records, or?
Um, well, they're supposed to be recorded, and then we get copies of the redesigned recording plans.
Okay. Gotcha, alright, so I'll leave them all with you?
Um, you guys take care of that.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, alright.
So, I have no idea.
Chris. Chris, your shopping done?
I started.
When do you want you sign your four weeks?
I don't even remember this time, but I'm today, I haven't started.
We have our team party this weekend, so I have, I've done, like, those, those gifts.
Where are you doing it?
My house. Nicole hosted last year, I'm hoping.
So can I hurry up and join the team and quit the team after the party?
You can just come if you want. It's cool, you know all of us.
I'd be able to take it, but they're always.
We're gonna do.
You wanna set for us?
And do.
There, right over there.
Or any less.
You heard this one.
So you can sign it once.
Yeah, that's Mylar, and that's paper.
I'm sorry, I'm going with Gary.
I don't know, I don't know yet. I don't know what our options are, it's Denise's.
This is, this is.
I guess probably still together, I don't think.
Hang around, and take you down.
Thank you.
Well, something like that. Yeah. Me a bigger table.
I'm gonna do some Oreo speedwagon thing.
What?
Oreokey.
You doing a Oreokey?
Yeah.
I'm having a lip singing on my fifth of August.
You are?
That's what, that's what I told my friends. We're gonna have a Christmas party. That way you don't have to hear people actually sing.
Sing?
That's the fun part though.
Oh, that's funny.
Why, is this still party, your forty birthday, or?
No, our team Christmas party this weekend.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, you'll get a puppy.
I would.
It's okay.
I didn't realize, I was trying to figure which one I needed.
Team Christmas party with masks on?
Yeah. We're gonna wear masks.
That'll be good.
I try to responsibly.
Yeah.
Be responsible party.
There's ten hundred and something cases today.
Huh.
In Maine?
Take upside and I love it, babe.
Sir.
I heard that rumor, he hasn't told me yet.
He hasn't?
No, I, I.
I feel like the other.
I heard the rumor.
How come he didn't tell you?
I don't know.
But I have a boy.
Is it? Oh, he didn't tell me. I know Riley was sort of, he was Brad Shore, but no, it's Amber and the powers out.
Okay. So he didn't tell you about the name?
No, he told me about that.
I wonder why I didn't tell you?
Oh, we just forgot.
Kind of a big thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're usually busy though. Alright. Thank you, bro.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You guys were good to work with.
I'm already bored with that.
You appreciate that, we can tell him that.
Probably not.
Definitely, yeah, you guys brought it, you know, everything it was asked for and had everything and.
Thank you very much, yeah, that means a lot.
And it was our first solo project, so.
Cool.
Yeah, they've been, they've been keeping us good, that's for sure.
Isn't like, yeah.
Yeah.
Isn't that cute?
Yeah. Dave would have flipped that screen now. Dave would have flipped that screen now. We're gonna need to sell him another house.
They're gonna have to, huh? Oh, the house is big, where have you been to it?
We don't have five grand, you know.
I know where it is, I've never been to it though.
No, they love it, with the lake and everything.
Yeah, that's a nice spot in there.
Do you have any of the um faction findings ready for us this time?
Yeah.
Are they in our little folder?
There you go. I have them.
You emailed them the other day.
Yeah, I saw some.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
It's nice to meet you.
I did meet you as well.
He's gonna go home and be like, hey, Chris, you couldn't get it done in months.
Yeah, I did it, I did it.
I know, right?
He did it one night, you know. Minute.
Yeah.
I wanna bring it.
You guys want me to print, I didn't know if you had read the copies, or do you want me to?
I read them.
I read them.
David, did you read them?
I didn't.
Do you want to read them?
No. I didn't say that out loud, did I?
Oh my heavens, I think I did.
No, I I I trust.
They look good.
They're pretty straightforward, yeah.
Tell me, let's see.
So Jen, we'll we'll uh make copies of these and send them back to you.
Awesome.
Last page.
Yep.
Last page, yeah.
First key, yeah.
So we have to send both?
So would you be dropping them off?
Was that?
With somebody, would you be dropping them off?
This is, this is telling me.
Uh, I'm not exactly sure, so probably be in contact with you.
That's Estes, this is Mel.
What?
Would you, so do you need paper copies of them soon, uh hard copies?
They're for all Estes, yes.
No, this is Mel Warren.
Okay. Um, yeah, I can give I can give him a call right now to see what the plan is.
Okay.
Andy passed reading class today.
Um.
She just handed to me and said, tell me.
I know. Alright, that was Mel Warren. That was, that was the nicest.
So we're done with, or not, right?
So are you, so do you not normally take any of these, we we I have no idea how the process works, so I'm like
Okay.
Yeah, so they, you have them recorded.
That's Estes.
Oh, in the first three, yeah.
And then, yeah, and then we have those copies.
Alright.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, man, have a great day.
Have a nice Christmas.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
What is this, Annie?
That's uh, this is um Hutchinson, that's the Two different uh property surveys. Jen, you don't have business cards?
What?
You don't have business cards?
Me?
Yeah.
No, nobody.
You should. You should have.
What's this one?
That's the faction finding for Miles.
We just signed Mel's letter.
Yeah, that was the letter, and then you said you should do both.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I can't.
Did I? That's on my chair. Oh, that's another one.
Do I put the sign paper on top?
Alright.
Yeah. That's the fuel facility. I'm trying to clean this out while I'm here, to throw this away.
Yep. This is all pre
This is
That's already approved, yeah, draped up.
Yeah, no, this one's a preview?
Yes. I think a few of those are, it's all preview stuff, Jen, it is backwards, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I put one more in the corner.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
See, like, I don't need this anymore. I'm just trying to get rid of some stuff.
So Chief said that we should be at the next meeting, and Gwen Grisman, Berterson, who's gonna be coming to the next meeting. Rachel Condi, in her turn, will be at the next meeting. And so is that in addition to that, is that maybe one more?
Well, what would they be changing again?
They are going to be, they wanna be adding another building down here. Cause at the time when they did, they were building like two buildings, so they wanted to do another one. Down on the beginning.
Our fifty dollar is still working, oh no, that's mine, I'm just making a mess.
I know.
No, I thought you were showing me something.
I'm, no, I'm just making a mess.
Yeah, another building there. That was bad, that was all bad, or full psych thing to do though, so.
We're done. We're done with Bastide, right?
Yes, we proved that one. Sarah, this thing, Jen, next one is a seven year, you're
I can't.
This is my instinct, and I wrote that on there, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I sold him the lot.
Okay.
Thank you, Ken.
That's why I was asking.
And I actually am under contract with him on another.
Is he involved with it too, or are we not?
No, he's not.
I don't do everything in there.
It seems like it lately.
I try, but.
You gotta deal with Sarah some.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta deal with Sarah.
Gotta find, throw, throw her some.
No.
The minutes for the fifth, except for the public hearing, which was videoed outside.
Yeah.
That's not gonna
Bad year.
Can we put, do you see the video online as far as the public hearing?
Very Still, still doing it. Seems fair.
Okay, because I don't
Yeah.
I'm down to it, I'm feeling
You know what I mean?
Right, yeah.
So, alright, so
And I think that move really, um
You guys know those minutes, you can look at those.
Contributed to that. So.
Well, momentum's going, it's sometimes better to stay on that ship.
I'm I'm happier being that.
Yep, oh no, I'm in.
Like I shouldn't have left?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that.
It's okay.
Regroup, refocus.
This is fuel facility stuff, I'm gonna make copies of these. What else do we have left?
Um, I'm gonna make a couple of copies of things, we got to cut out, so we'll work.
After the past few meetings, running to like nine, this is nice.
What's Zikler?
What's what?
Zikler.
Right.
I'm in old stuff, I'm just trying to purge.
Zikler? What's those pictures of?
I don't know.
I don't even remember this, this The date on this is nineteen ninety three, I'm in the postage.
Oh, you know what, that's
You, you, there was somebody old, somebody's old file.
Is this, is this a, yeah, is this an approved something?
Yeah, this was, um, well, you know, I haven't touched it since I was small.
Must have been an old building firm or something. Pictures aren't really good.
Republic state of the art.
Yeah, the day. Sarah wasn't even born at that point, was she?
I was born in nineteen eighty.
I thought you were only twenty five.
Oh, nineteen ninety four. How, I don't know, how old, no, I'm eighteen now, I got sick at twenty five, so I'm eighteen.
Oh, yeah, now you're on the other side. You go backwards.
Yeah, yeah. I'm getting a fake ID, I was gonna say I'm younger.
That's the original.
Oh no, you gotta card me, oh yeah, no.
That was Dana too?
Yeah, I guess it's safe to throw away the uh golf course.
We done with that?
Yep. Spencer Lane? You know what we need to do, we need to um change the subdivision guide with the roads that we did? We got to actually change it now.
Oh, we didn't actually give that, I thought Jen was gonna put that together.
What? The um subdivision guide, did you get that changed with the roads?
Yes.
Cause we need roads. This is a challenge.
So, those, I mean, it's from the fifth, except for the I'm going to
This is what I'm working on now, I think.
What's that?
Dolby.
What?
Dolby?
Yeah, that's one of the ones I gotta site more.
That's good.
Okay, that's a fuel facility, I can't come back or what? Oh man, this is the public hearing?
Yeah, so I didn't put all the, I didn't put the public hearing in there, I was gonna, cause I have no idea who it's not, so I just put you see the video online or whatever, the public hearing? If that is accepted.
What is this you just gave us, Jen? This thing?
So, um Julie, who works with Mr. Wallace, had sent this over, and who wanted to know that this would be an in-law, it's two houses sharing a garage. I, it's two houses, it's not an in-law apartment, it's a ranch in a colonial.
What are you talking about?
It's two residences.
This is what they wanna do, but they are sending it to an in-law.
So they wanna add all of it?
It all burned new, hasn't been done.
Right, so it's attached by the garages only.
Yeah, but if it's attached, it's attached, right?
It's irrelevant, I mean, it's
Very interesting design.
Um, it's not considered an in-law, an in-law, it would be considered two residences.
Right.
It's considered two residences, e- even when people make it in law, most of the time, it's still considered
They're just trying to avoid sprinklers.
I mean, it's basically a duplex, right?
Yeah.
They're trying to say it's one, so that they cannot have sprinklers.
Thank you.
Put the garage in the middle, yeah.
But that's what he wants to do. He wants to build duplexes and not have to have sprinkler systems.
What is the, in the subdivision guy, what is the legal definition of in-law?
Look it up, don't you have one?
Yeah, I will, I will, I I don't have it all on me at this point.
Let me look, I have it.
None of you know, think it's actually in there?
Versus residence, cause I I'm under the understanding that an in-law is supposed to have some specific characteristics.
Yes, it is.
Different than a
Where, so Jen, would, where's um
So I'd say it's two separate, no, I wouldn't know that is.
It is, it's a duplex, anyone who slice it.
Okay.
Yeah. Cause an in-law is kinda, it's more like an apartment, right?
Right, but I, I mean, we'll just look at the legal definition and then call it a day.
Usually like above a garage or
Yeah, in the basement, yeah.
Well, there's supposed to be some things where it's not supposed to have its own uh utility.
Right.
It's supposed to be a shared utility. It's there's some
Septic, really?
Yeah, it affects your septic, there's all sorts of
I got these two close together.
Found something in the unit, I didn't know that.
Where's my appendix?
I don't think it's gone, I think it's in the
If it hasn't been removed, then it's right up, no.
Such a comedian.
I mean, we don't have to do that now, I just
I'm pretty sure they'd have to have shared utilities, and I think that they're gonna have to have a shared common wall right here.
My understanding, and I'm not sure, was it's also not supposed to be legally rentable.
Right.
So I'm gonna have to, I wanna, I'll do some research on what
Are we talking like an in-law or like an accessory?
Accessory and in-law, uh I I'll do some research, but I don't, I don't wanna prejudge, I'll I'll just do some research and figure it out. But um, this sure looks like a duplex to me.
That looks like a duplex?
It, yeah, it's a, it's a strange looking one, but it's a duplex. You get two residences, the garage has nothing to do with it, there's two attached residences, it's a duplex.
I really think that they have to share a wall to be a duplex, so I think we should
I don't.
So they're sharing a garage, yeah.
Sharing a garage wall. And even if they were detached, it's two residences on one lot, it's still
Right, cause you could have a detached garage in the apartment over there, right?
Yeah, sure, yeah. Yeah, I I'll I'll spend some time on that.
It's in the, it's in one of the ordinances.
Yeah.
Is that?
Well, we'll find out.
It's not something we have to do tonight.
Right.
Is this more just a question if we're
Yeah, they just, uh, try to figure out what they can do.
I mean, he hasn't come back.
Yeah, exactly, he's gonna have to start again, really.
You say?
Hmm? What? That golf course?
Oh, St. Haiden.
Where is this proposed to on, Jen?
Um, I think she Cause I asked, cause I didn't know if it's gonna be down on the Wood Road, do they, I don't know. Cause, oh, Mr. Small's gonna be coming too, cause he has two in-laws, he's gonna split off of that. Um
I feel like
Possibly upper valley.
I feel like the minutes
Mm-hmm.
under fire suppression only touch on a smidge of what we talked about, um, for the subdivision regulations. I mean, it's a bunch on the fieldings, but I think a big piece that's missing here is that I stated that I felt like it should be an all or nothing type of situation with the chief. And not that we're trying to get rid of sprinklers altogether, we're just trying to even the playing field. I don't know if you guys remember that?
I remember it, I agreed it should be one way or the other.
Actually, that whole conversation flipped out of the minutes completely.
I will go back and watch it.
Okay.
But we only have control over what comes to the board. I was good, I saw you.
I think that's the only change.
And these are just a a recording, so. Have to do the other one. So add that in, I'll watch the movie.
You watch the movie?
I'll watch the recording, the whatever, what do you wanna call it?
The video.
The video, I'll watch the video.
Why do I have stairs? I have like five.
Of everything?
Yeah.
I'll take the after.
This one says to mark up, and I don't know why we were marking up site plan review.
Oh, because when we first went, we were sitting there and. Um, so we were sitting there and because there are things that should be changed.
I'm gonna keep this second Sherland zone ordinance, cause that other one's falling apart, so.
So anybody who had any. Um, what do you call it, suggestions and what other things that could have changed on that, because a lot of. Issues aren't friendly.
Everybody needs gift.
Looking on different towns in my solo keys?
Yeah, I saw that.
What was that?
Box like that to me, to towns, different towns, and what they charge for solo payments.
Really?
Yeah.
But why is she sending that to us?
I don't know, she received it from somebody, she said, I'm not sure if you received this, that might be helpful to you.
Um, we don't set those fees, that's so important.
Well, for a site plan, we do a weekly, right?
Um, I'm not comfortable with that. We can let David figure that out.
Do you know?
There's your homework.
Oh, really?
No, not you!
I didn't think so.
You were volunteering?
Oh, we have to go through that application too, we have to do that at some point.
Which application?
You know, when I need that, I need that application.
The one you, the one you made per, the one you made perfect?
Yeah. It's not perfect anymore.
Should we just go back to the old Charlie, is the only one for the moment?
Sure.
And then add in, I'll try and get that done.
These are, oh, these are different.
Mm-hmm. So the two oh two gentleman, so he did submit the application. So he came in, he didn't have uh, he gave it to us. The gentleman, uh.
We want him.
Want, we have the surveys.
We want to have a water, water uh plant for. For your grill, for like till we want to see runoff from the roof.
Right.
And I was intending to go, I wanna see the red ones. And.
Do you have a copy of the survey?
No, he doesn't, um, he didn't turn it in, unless David has it, I don't know.
So. My thought is when next time, when he provides all that stuff, then we can look at that and decide when to do a site walk.
I agree.
I'll email.
I mean, the point of doing a site walk, I think is.
To compare with this.
Right, so we can see what. If we don't have the info yet and we do the site walk, we're not gonna know where to look for what.
Yeah, I agree.
So.
I agree. He didn't bring up, he didn't bring up the first time?
Oh.
That was the one I missed.
No, he, we we, that's when we said, hey, we want all this stuff, so it sounds like now he's got it done, he hasn't turned it in, well, okay, turn it in, we'll see it, talk about it at the meeting.
Schedule.
We're not gonna schedule fifty dolby either, because they didn't show up tonight.
Okay, well, we just did, so it's off the, then then do we want to do it in the reverse order? It doesn't matter.
We'll just skip it, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I know what you mean, but. Shouldn't be that bad.
I think we just move in the region.
Well, we we also can adjourn it whenever, you know, we can listen to what we want.
Right. It's not a public hearing, it's a site walk, right?
Well, it's not a debate.
Yeah.
So we're just gonna do.
What?
Rocky Cove.
Rocky Cove.
And um twenty-two Ridge.
Yeah.
I mean, people can voice concerns, but we also need to be able to look at what we wanna look at and uh.
What are you talking about?
Rocky Cove, when we have our site walk.
Oh.
I just.
Jen, we were just talking about the time res, you know. So we had to stop there having a.
Two hours.
Well, I can shut that down, I don't care, we'll just go, we'll just say we gotta go. I gotta go.
We have another appointment.
I repeat.
Cause it's not a meeting.
It's not a debate, what it boils down to is, you know, tell us your concerns and we'll listen and move on, but I'm, we're not here to argue with your concerns, if you have a concern, share it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and then.
And if you don't, then.
Listen.
And once you share it, we'll listen and then we'll look at what we need to look at and then we'll go.
Yeah.
For adjournment.
Do you have something, Jen?
Some section?
No.
So I'll do. Thing for Draybo, I'll do the solar. I will correct the ten five minutes, I will finish the eleven two, I just have the last discussion with the angles. At the.
That's coming up the next minute, along with this world.
Um.
It's a little familiar. Are you involved in this one too?
What is that?
Yeah, Nora Harrison.
You are? Alright, we're gonna have to revisit this planning board situ- situation.
We could, I I li- that's what I'm saying, I've never, I I think I've had maybe one thing in front of a planning board that I was involved in 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 the past twenty-two years living here.
I think I've seen you twice.
Yeah, and now all of a sudden, seems like, well, but these are the ones that I, like that one, I looked at it and I was selling it and she would, she was ready to go, title was good, everything, and I went, nah. You, this was part, in fact, all we planned said, no, 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 it doesn't need to go to subdivision, I go, yep, it does, so I.
What is it though?
It was just cause it, it was, had been divided once before and there was a spot on the, on the previous division that says, any future changes of this have to come back. So even though they were like, well, it's been more than five years, I'm like, yeah, that'd be fine if it didn't say on the thing that you have to come back, but it says on the thing, you have to come back, so. So I'm the one that actually forced them into coming to us on that, but it's, cause you know, I, you gotta do it the right way.
Yeah. Get all that integrity spilling right out of you.
Yeah.
So you are on the wrong team.
Actually, I won't tell.
Alright. I'm making a motion to end this.
Yeah, Jen's still clinking.
Second.
Do you know how to get on?
Jen's still clinking, you all set, Jen, or?
I think so.
Alright. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Meeting is adjourned?
Um, I need a title company now.
Well, let's shut this off, yeah.
Yeah.